Madam Clerk, if you'd call us in, please.
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Yeah.
Mayor Jason Larry.
I am here. Very well, thank you. You'll stand for the invocation and pledge, please.
Thank you, my friend. Let us bow our heads. What a wonderful opportunity, Lord, that we have this coming week to not only thank you spiritually, but physically for the great and mighty things you do. We thank you for this opportunity to serve and worship you. We thank you for your goodness, your mercy, your grace, and your glory toward us. We thank you for the wisdom and direction you give us to lead the people of Stonecrest, but not only that, Lord, to serve the people of Stonecrest. As we serve them, we're serving you. So we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, to stop for just a moment and say thank you for all the great and mighty things you always do for us. Now, Lord, we ask a special blessing upon this meeting, upon this, our mayor, our council, our staff member, and for the people of Stonecrest, that the light of God will shine mightily in this great city, and the world will know that Stonecrest is in your hand. And we give you all the glory and praise for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. We're going to look at council, the approval of the council agenda. Then we'll properly ask for a deferral. You know, during the actual meeting. All right. Any other changes, folks?
So we're removing E?
No, we'll do it before one is that time. Yes, sir. All right.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we accept the council agenda for November 25th, 2019.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda approved. Counsel your minutes for November 12th, 2019, city council meeting minutes. Give you a few minutes just to refresh yourself. And then we'll take any changes or comments from here.
Madam Clerk. I sent a lot of corrections in, and you get those in here a bit. I see that they're not checking. In the motions, you have Councilman Clayton making the motion and seconding the motion on old business. You should have about three, you have it?
I have it. I can make the corrections. You want to approve them with the corrections, I can put them in there. Do you want me to read them into the minutes?
Yes, please.
Motion number two was made by Rob Turner and seconded by Jimmy Clayton. The old business blood plane ordinance was made by Rob Turner and seconded by Jimmy Clayton. Council comments, check. Jimmy Clayton versus Jimmy Turner, I'll fix that. And Councilmember George Turner's comments was to announce a census meeting on November 19th and 6:00 PM to plan for the 16th rally.
Thank you.
All right, counsel. Any other changes? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Mayor.
Sir.
I move that we approve the minutes for November 12th with the stated corrections.
All right, properly moved?
Second.
Double second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved. We're going to go to a public hearing for SLUP 19-005-2773, Evans Mill Road. Excuse me, gentlemen. I apologize if you will indulge me just for one second. I saw public hearings, but then mentally I was thinking public comments. So with counsel permission, can we take public comments now? All right.
Ms. Renee Kill.
That's right.
Is it possible that we could do the comments after the presentation? Because we don't, we don't know what it is.
So this is different.
Well, there's a presentation that's going to be made. It's impossible to.
You're wanting to speak on the SLUP? Okay, that'll be during the public hearing, and there'll be 10 minutes to oppose, and there'll be 10 minutes for.
But this is general.
Okay, this is general public comments.
Okay.
So you don't have to fill out a card for that.
This is about anything.
Oh, okay.
This is just whatever you want to talk about for three minutes.
Don't make her stop, man.
You know what, he already knows what I'm going to say. He already knows what I'm going to say. So.
It's good stuff, it's good stuff.
I will just say a little bit, and then I'll say the other part after the presentation. We just really, residents of Stonecrest basically just want to have a great place to live, and we don't want projects coming that are going to be damaging environmentally. So that's, you know, what we're concerned about at the time. And also want things that are economically great for the. See you all later.
Thank you.
Ms. Wells, Malaika Wells.
Thank you so much. My name is Malaika Wells. I'm a Stonecrest resident, and I was here for your work session, or at least some part of it. And I had two questions primarily. One comment about the budget. So there's lots I don't know about how city government works. I'm learning. I've never lived before within the city limits of a place and needed or felt the need to be involved as I have now, so I'm happy to do that. My question about the budget is, it seemed like some of what y'all were seeing was coming as a surprise to you. I know how we handle the budget in my household, and I try my best not to shock my husband with anything, and I think he does the same for me. So the question in that is, how does that process work with you all? When do you see the budget information? When do you see the packets and know what you're going to be discussing? And I'm asking specifically about council members with that. So that's the first one. The second thing was the introduction of creating a Stonecrest Convention Bureau. Put it on here as CBB, and I wanted to hear more about that. Now, when I looked at the agenda, I thought my comments were going to come at the end of your session, so I thought I'd have the benefit of hearing more about that in this part. But I want to hear more about that because Discover de Cab seems like they have a lot of resources that we could avail ourselves of and maybe have a liaison in the person who's on staff here to assist us with making that of better use to us. So those are the two things that I had to say, and thank you for your time.
Those are all the public comments that I have for now. The rest are public hearings.
Now we're here. Your SLUP 19-005.
Good evening, City Council. This first case is brought to you is, this evening is SLUP-19-005. The applicant is GSPS Hospitality with Hilliard Starky. The applicant is requesting a special land use permit to operate, to construct a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. The subject property is 2773 Evans Mill Road, and total acres for the subject property is .83 acres. Just some general information regarding the subject property. Currently, this property is on C1. The future land use for this, for the subject property is the regional center. Some of the policies for the regional center is to promote concentration of regional serving activities to centralized location that allows for a variety of uses while reducing automobile travel, promoting walkability, and increased transit usage. Also, the regional centers shall include a very high density and mix of retail office, services, and employment opportunities to serve several neighborhoods. The surrounding uses are commercial and residential, and the surrounding zoning is C1, local commercial, and MR2 medium density residential. This is an aerial map of the subject property. The star, if you can see, makes where the subject property is located. I'll get into all the surrounding uses along Evans Mill Road. Again, this is the zoning map. Again, currently, the property is on C1. As you can see, along Evans Mills, up and down Evans Mills, to the north and south, is a commercial corridor. Located to the west is a multifamily residential home, there's an apartment. And then located to the east, you have some single-family homes. And further to the south, you still have a mixture of C1 and office institutional. This is the proposed site plan of the subject property. Existing right now of the property is Mill, is a restaurant, or more of a late, or I wouldn't say a club, but just a lounge type of environment. Right now, it's currently active. The applicant is coming in to redevelop that restaurant into a Burger King. This is the proposed site plan of what the Burger King is going to look like. This is a view from the subject property off Evans Mill Road. Again, this is where the Mill is located. Previously, before the Mill was at that subject property, that used to be a Wendy's with their existing drive-through. Unfortunately, I lost the picture showing where the old drive-through was located, which is located at the rear, probably at, according to where it Cap'n D's is. Located to the south of the subject property is Cap'n D's. Located further south is Mammy's Country Cooking, Robert Soul Food, McDonald's, and there's several gas stations to the south and to the north of the subject property. These are the proposed elevations of the subject property. The applicant is proposing that this will be an all-brick facility. The applicant, what should I say, Burger King is starting to resign all the Burger Kings across the nation, so this is one of the first Burger Kings in the city to be resigned to be a more brick, may have a more clean look compared to the previously incarnations. This is just another look of the subject property, of the proposed elevations, the north and south. Again, it's just to reillustrate again that the subject, that the proposed use will be an entire brick facility. Again, to reiterate again, the surrounding uses, again, unfortunately, I apologize for the print to be so small to actually fit it on there. Again, everything that's highlighted in red, those are similar uses, or C1, or fast food, or casual type of dining, or a commercial entity. Again, located to the north is a gas station, American Hardware, American Hardware retail spot. And then located to the south is Cap'n D's Restaurants, Robert Soul Food Kitchen, a gas station, another gas station, Mammy Soul Food Kitchen, and then McDonald's. These are the standards of review, which you'll be using to make your determination by, for when it comes to a SLUP. There's 27 criteria specifically designed to review each specific use. Staff has reviewed each one, and staff believes that the proposed use is consistent with the surrounding uses, and still meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. Even though the intent of the comprehensive plan, especially the regional center, is to actually do high-density residential and commercial, the staff believes that the proposed use still meets the intent and spirit of the comprehensive plan. Therefore, along with the improvements that the applicant has said they're willing to do, it still needs to intend of being a more walkable, more viable location. So therefore, staff does recommend approval of the application with three conditions. Any questions of staff?
Do we talk about these conditions now, or when we open a public hearing?
You can talk about them now, or you can talk about, you can talk about them anytime you feel like it, sir.
Tell us what those three are.
The three conditions is that the special land use, the permit shall be issued to Todd Jackson, the agent or GPS Hospitality for the operation of the restaurant with the drive-through, and shall not be transferable. Again, so if the applicant decides to abandon the subject property, therefore, if another, say McDonald's decided they want to show up at that location, therefore, the special land use permit, if issued tonight, cannot be transferred to them. So they'll have to come back in front of the city council to get approval all over again. Two, the applicant shall secure all the necessary business license, building permits, land disturbance permits, and all the required permits from the city of Stonecrest. Currently, the applicant has all, is currently going through the review process for the building permits and the land disturbance permits. All of that will not be approved pending if you guys approve their special land use permit. We cannot issue any of that unless they get approval for their SLUP. Also, the applicant shall follow the supplemental regulations of Section 4.2.23 cited in the Stonecrest Zoning Ordinance. Therefore, there's other supplemental regulations associated with drive-through, special, with drive-through restaurants, such as landscaping requirements, sidewalk improvements, and a host of other things as well.
Excellent. Counsel.
So when you mentioned improvements earlier, would you just mention those improvements that you were speaking of?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so again, because anytime you have, anytime you do any kind of new construction or new development, you always have to do new improvements along existing streets or new streets. That means new landscape strips, that means maintaining the existing sidewalk, or making it look, or extending the sidewalk. So there's a list of things that the applicant has to meet before the land disturbance permit is issued to them. If not, then they will either have to seek a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, or they will not get their permit.
So in the case, in the case where there is no sidewalk, does that mean that they?
Yes, sir. They have to include a sidewalk, yes, sir.
When you mentioned that the SLUP was going to be given to GPS Hospitality, is Todd Jackson, so this is not a franchise location?
It is a franchise. Todd Jackson is just the agent representing GPS Hospitality. They have a contract with Burger King and Popeyes to redevelop sites throughout the country. So he's just representing that company in coordination with Burger King.
So if the, so that doesn't affect the franchise owner?
What do you mean the franchise owner?
So if the owner changed?
Oh, yeah, if the owner changed, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. It's still, it's still associated with the Burger King, yes, ma'am.
What if they changed the hospitality group?
Well, I mean, you can, honestly, I have this legal opinion, but I'm not too sure about that. I don't want to, I don't know the answer to that one, so I have to rely on the counsel on that one.
I was just curious why we give the SLUP to.
Well, we give it to him because, because he's the applicant, because that's the applicant's name on there. It's specifically put it to, put it to them, whoever applies for it. We put it to them because that's who's applicant owned the application. So we associate it with them, and knowing that it is for Burger King.
So as long as that hospitality group stays, I guess, with that property, it could, it could be a Burger King, and then one day it could be something else, and as long as it still.
Unless you want specifically stated that it has to be a Burger King, unless you want to say this SLUP is only for a Burger King, not associated for any other type of restaurant. If you want to be that specific, you can.
No, I was just trying to understand a little bit more.
I mean, the reason, the reason why staff put it in there is to, is to, again, is to limit the SLUP to, is to identify who we're giving permission to, instead of just, specifically just a random Burger King, but people associated with this application. Again, to define who it is, because again, if it's not Mr. Jackson or GPS Hospitality, it could be somebody different saying, oh, I have a Burger King here, I'm approved. Well, you didn't apply for it. Your name wasn't on it.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. I was just thinking, I mean, a hospitality company is contracted.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Right, so that could change just as easily as.
Right, yes, ma'am.
You know, so I was just curious, if they change, but the franchise owner wants to remain there, what do we do with the SLUP then?
I mean, as staff has heard, I mean, that seemed to be a little bit unjust, is to make them go back through it all over again, because again, staff is seeing that the original intent was the Burger King to be at that location. Even if a franchise is, but it's changed ownership, if the sole use of the, specifically of the use still stays the same, that a Burger King is still there with the drive-through, staff would still allow that. Also, if something, well, I was just saying not allow, but staff would interpret it to allow it to still maintain at that location. It's only a time when something completely changed, or a different franchise, or something like that decides to come in, then staff would say, okay, well, you need to go through the process all over again. Because again, your intent was for a Burger King to be at that location, not Popeyes or anything else at that location.
Even if GPS Hospitality came with another restaurant?
Yes, if they came.
Would still apply?
I would still apply. I would tell you to apply for a Burger King. That's, that's, that's my interpretation, would be you apply for a Burger King restaurant, because again, you came in front of the city council to do a Burger King restaurant, now you want to do something different, I don't, I think you need to come back in front of the city council. Now, unless I'm overstepping my authority, please let me know, but that would be my intent. I mean, that would be my, my, my thought or direction to go. Because again, come in front of the city council, this is what you want to do. I think if you're not going to do that, then you have to come back in front of the city council to get approval for that, for whatever you want to do again.
I was just curious on how that works, seeing that the franchise owner could change, and so could the hospitality company change, and vice versa. The only other question I had was the regional center for the comp plan. And you mentioned that it's not exactly that, but it's in the spirit of it, doesn't change the current character.
Yes, ma'am.
Of the area. Is there, is there any opportunity in this area for us to actually impose the regional center spirit with other retail, office space, anything else that's not a restaurant?
I mean, yes, ma'am. I mean, as city council, you have that power, the luxury. You can disagree with my staff report and say, well, Chris, even though it meets the spirit, doesn't meet the actual set standard set by the comprehensive plan. You can disagree and say, we'd rather not have that. I mean, that's, that's up to your interpretation, that's within your willpower, you can do that if you want to. Staff thinks that it's still the use itself, there's not enough to say it doesn't meet the spirit of it, so therefore, that's why staff will recommend approval, but if, again, you guys are the body can say, well, no, we want it to be specifically at that location instead of something that doesn't necessarily fit the criteria of the area.
Is there actually, like today, is there, is there parcels, is there available land that would allow us to move in that direction?
I could not tell you off the top of my head. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know if there are any available parcels that, in the area where you can make that determination.
I was just trying to see if this closes the deal for even getting us in that, in that space, you know, if this is like the last parcel unoccupied in that.
I would say, I would say no, never, because again, transaction, real estate transaction takes, takes place all the time. Like I say, again, somebody can decide, well, you know, I want to do something at this location. I mean, because this could spur that type of development. I mean, it just takes one person to do it, but this isn't close the door. I would never say that on anything. Like I say, again, it could be, it could just start something new, but it wouldn't close the door on anything.
But today, we don't know that there's anything else in that kind of, that's different than a restaurant.
No, ma'am, not at, not at this time. It's mainly, like I said, it's mainly just fast food, casual restaurants, gas stations, and maybe one or two retail stores.
I was not totally clear on the sidewalk situation, and now, are we saying they are required?
Yes, sir.
With the sidewalks there?
Yes, sir. And landscape improvements, yes, sir, they are required.
Good. Something else, they are in overlay district. I'm not sure whether that's I-20 or that's Stonecrest.
Stonecrest.
That's the Stonecrest overlay district?
Yes, sir.
And within the Stonecrest overlay district, there are some specific design guidelines. This is applicable here?
Yes, sir. I mean, they've, since they're doing all brick, yes, sir, they're, they're mean 100%.
And the design standards committee has approved the design?
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, I am just kidding.
All right. Well, good. You mentioned Section 4.2.2.3 as being applicable here. Quickly, what is that?
That's just other, so you have supplemental regulations as well that, that look at specific uses throughout the entire city, and they add extra, extra regulations or requirements for any type of use, that say for, like, I'm not going to use that example, but for, say for a large multi-tented building, there are certain requirements that they have to meet, certain distance that they meet from the, from the public right-of-way, certain sign requirements. So those are just general extra regulation standards that they have to meet. They don't meet that, either they try to see if this is applicable to a variance, or they just won't get their permit, because it's required for them to meet those standards. Again, it's just another set of standards that they have to meet, just general standards they have to meet for a development of the property.
But, thank you.
I think you stated that the present operator of that location has a drive-through already.
Well, it used to have a drive-through. It used to be a Wendy's before, before the Mill is currently operating at that point in time. The old, as you, if you go on the backside of the Mill, you can see where the old drive-through is located, drive-through machine, it's still there, you know, still has a little Wendy's tag on it and everything, but clearly, again, the original intent was for it to be a fast food restaurant, so.
So it's on for a.
Yes, sir. It's on for it, but since it's in the, in the regional center, and the regional center is an activity center.
Right.
All drive-through, all.
I understand. But I'm just saying it was already zoned for.
Yes, sir. Yes, C1 and so forth, yes, sir.
Right, okay.
And the applicant is here, if you got any questions for them. Unless, I'm sorry, unless you're not done with me yet, then I'm.
All right. I'm going to take a motion to open here.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
Are they going to tear that building down?
No, no, they're not going to tear it down. No, they're just retro, actually, I take that back. I believe they are going to tear it down, yes, because they're applying for a land disturbance permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir.
I move that we open the floor for public hearing for special land use permit 19-005-2773 Evans Mill Road.
All right, properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hakeem Hilliard with Hilliard Starky Law. I'm here this evening on behalf of GPS Hospitality. I'm here with Mr. Todd Jackson, who's with GPS Hospitality. Mr. Willough did a good summary of the project. I wanted to go over a couple of points generally and respond to a concern that I think I will anticipate based on a comment that's been made. And then Mr. Jackson's going to hold up some, what we think are pretty pictures to show you about what the actual building that we're proposing is going to look like. Again, this is a .81 acre tract of land at 2773 Evans Mill Road. It's a former Wendy's. It's, as was stated, it's the same former Wendy's building, the drive-through is still there, it's just not active. Currently, what's operating there is the Mill Restaurant. I think there was a question about that. It's, it's operating, it's actually open tonight, it's going to operate until, less than until we get this approved and the contract is executed. What GPS Hospitality is proposing to do is demo the existing building and rebuild this existing building, which is more functional. If you've seen the, the new Burger Kings anywhere, it's a lot like that, it'll be identical to that, but we'll talk to you about specifically what's going to change. In terms of the environmental concerns, I just wanted to respond to that briefly. There's a couple of points, and I think it's evidenced most clearly by the first comment and call we got, and the only person that attended our, the meeting that we hosted asked a question about what we were doing, and it ended up that it was the property owner for the adjacent parcel, because. And it ended up that it was the property owner for the adjacent parcel, uh, because he was, uh, interested in potential of what that was going to mean for his property. Was he going to have to develop it? How was it going to affect his value? And so I think there's a direct relationship, and you all probably know this better than me, between the redevelopment of property and what occurs and what's encouraged on properties adjacent and nearby. So we're, we're hopeful that although Burger King may not be your first choice, or a fast food restaurant with a drive-through might not be your first choice. Uh, given where the property is, what's been developed on that property recently and what it's going to do for this area, particularly in light of the fact that we're adding so many things and just a new building. The landscaping, the lighting, the parking and the pavement, everything is going to be brand new. We're complying in every respect with the overlay requirements. The, the, the sidewalk that connects from one end of our parcel to the other, encouraging future development to do the same. We think there's a lot of good reasons why, uh, this should be supported. And then the other thing I think is just important, and I see your mayor Larry talk about this all the time. You've got a new corporate partner, uh, in the city of Stonecrest. And I can tell you when Mr. Jackson and I first met, that was his first thing that he said to me is, I know. You know, this is fast food. We do it well. We do these buildings well. We'll be a good community partner. But we understand that because it's fast food, we need to have a broader conversation with the city about how we can contribute to the welfare of the citizens and making it a healthy environment, all the things that are concerned concerning to the city. We just haven't had to have that, haven't had the opportunity to have that conversation fully. Uh, we hosted one meeting, the planning commission, we've been to a couple of public hearings. And, and there's just not been a lot of discussion around that, but we're here and, and I, Mr. Jackson's anxious and willing and able to be a, a strong community partner for the city of Stonecrest. Uh, and then another thing, and finally, I think Burger King's not so bad. I'll just tell you that when we came to the planning commission meeting, I brought my nine-year-old and she was very upset with me throughout the course of the entire meeting. And she said, Dad, I thought you were bringing me to go to eat at Burger King, not that we were going to a meeting about Burger King. There is some interest and excitement about Burger King despite, uh, whatever concerns that might exist. But, uh, Mr. Jackson has got the photographs of the proposed building here, and you can see that it's, uh, you want to kind of talk about, talk us through it, Todd?
Mr. Jackson, I'm going to ask you to do two things also, if you don't mind. Uh, one, of course, certainly show them to us, but find a way of turning them around so that the, uh, the public can see also.
I'll let Hakeem help me with that part of it. Uh, these are the side elevations or the north and south elevations of the store. As you can see, it's all brick with a wood panel veneer that's in the brown. Uh, the signs here are represented as what this, what we're illustrating is what the signs or placements would be. But obviously we'll have to meet whatever the sign ordinance is for the city of Stonecrest. Uh, this may be too much more, this may indicate more signage than what's allowed, but, uh, this is just for illustration purposes. Uh, the second, uh, board that Hakeem has here, these are the front and the rear. So the top, uh, photograph here is what will be facing Evans Mill Road. This is the rear side, rear of the, of the property. And then, um, we'll just move on to, uh, the actual site plan. This is the actual site plan. As you can see, we'll have one point of ingress, one point of egress. This is the sidewalk that you're asking about, Councilman Turner, and this is the ADA approach out from the, the building out to the public sidewalk. And then, um, we have new, uh, LED lighting that'll be placed here to brighten up the parking lot and, and provide for additional safety. And then we have our dumpsters back here, and then this is a single drive-through with, uh, two drive-through windows. And as far as the landscaping goes, um, I believe, uh, Chris can, can attest that, uh, we're meeting the landscaping code requirements. And we're putting a number of trees and shrubbery all the way around the property, as well as some around the actual building itself. Uh, we don't have the legend here that calls out what all the trees are, but, uh, those are on our civil plans, uh, state exactly what the calipers and everything are.
We'll otherwise hear and available to answer any questions you might have.
Is this your first Burger King in the city of Stonecrest or in this area?
City of Stonecrest, yes. Uh, we operate about eighty to eighty-five other, uh, Burger Kings in the greater Atlanta area.
All right, then Madam Clerk, we'll start. Um, and then, uh, applicant will call you up as, uh, uh, as we move from there.
There's four minutes left for them.
Yeah. All right. So, uh, while we're on that same, uh, we'll call up those. You know what? Let's start with, uh, the fund group. I'll call up those that are opposed to, uh, the king.
Mr. Barney Knight?
It's not what you think. As I've observed before, I really do think that the law of zoning should be changed to create three categories. Those who are in favor, those who are opposed, and those who are mostly in favor but would like it be tweaked or, uh, adjusted a little bit. And really, technically this, uh, this is opposition, but I, I really fall into the third category. Great project. Uh, I think for the area, this is going to be something that really, really does help, does help quite a bit. Uh, my only concern is a technical one. It's my understanding that the site plans, which are of record is as part of this zoning. The zoning package that is in front of you do not show the sidewalk. And I recognize that the developer and that the builder absolutely does intend to put in a sidewalk will be required. However, to avoid any possibility of a conflict or some question down the road, I would suggest that you simply add a condition, and the condition would be that there shall be a sidewalk along the Evans, uh, Evans Mill, uh, road frontage. I don't, I've talked with Mr. Hilliard, my colleague, Mr. Hilliard before about this. I don't think they're going to have an objection to that, and I think that would really nail it down. And I think that's important, uh, not just for aesthetics, not, but also because this is heretofore the overlay. This is the regional activity center and the, as you saw from one of the slides, which, uh, Mr. Wheeler, uh, showed. Walkability, walkability is a key hallmark of both of these, uh, uh, districts, uh, and character areas. Uh, I would also be remiss if I didn't welcome Mr. Wheeler back in, in the wake of, uh, uh, he and his wife having their first child. And, uh, I'm almost surprised he didn't show a couple of photos as part of his presentation.
He's got them.
Congratulations, Mr. Wheeler.
Ms. Renee Kill? I don't have anybody else for opposition.
Right, then we'll move for those that want to speak in favor.
Evening.
Evening.
I think to say that I'm interested in economic development in Stonecrest is a severe understatement. Smart growth means putting the right things in the right places where they have the most benefit. Uh, the northern side of Evans Mill Road after the exit is pretty much a gas and go. It's part of a regional development, but it's a gassing. It's where people get off the interstate, they get gas, they get something to eat, they get back on. There's also apartments and other, uh, residents around there where this is their commercial neighborhood. This is where they walk out late at night, go get stuff to eat, go to the gas station, go and pick up whatever they need to pick up. Um, I understand that a lot of our citizens think every time there's a fast food restaurant that comes to Stonecrest, here we go again. You can't get anything better. But this is not one of the situations where you make that argument. There are some parts of Stonecrest that need one less vacant building and another place that's, that's hiring. And I think that this is where this particular development fits in. These, as more development like this and proposals like this, that whole corridor can be rehabbed. Because they're coming in, tearing down the old and building the new, which puts the city having the only burden is to keep it clean and keep it safe. And they're doing the rest of the work for it. It's a problematic area where development needs to occur, redevelopment needs to occur. And I think this is the first of a number of good projects that could come here. I'm in favor.
Madam Clerk, how much time do you have?
Eight minutes and fifteen seconds.
Okay, any further in support? Ms. Fay, how you doing? I'm just beautiful.
I have lived in, I am Fay Garner. I live on Davidson Drive. I have been there fifty-something years. When I, when we built our house there, Evans Mill was residential. And so I have seen it go from all residential to all commercial. I don't mind that because, um, it's what people wanted. But please, please make it very, very pretty.
There you go.
Please make it pretty. I'm tired of looking at, uh, places that I have to go by every day. That are not desirable. They're not pretty. They're not kelp. Also, up and down Evans Mill Road, we need, and, and maybe this isn't when the time I need to address this. But we need police protection if we're going to have these restaurants there. There are always people walking up and down that area. Lots of times the other day I was going somewhere and this person was standing just in the middle of the road. And I was able to go by him. They're sitting on the sides of the road. They're walking up and down the roads. And I wish that if we're going to get these nice, nice restaurants here, and they're going to be pretty. Um, they also need, we also need police up and down that road. Now you're telling me eventually we're going to get a police precinct here. I'm looking for that. And I'm looking for them to be where I can see them in the area. And I'm addressing several issues here. But this is my time to tell you what I am seeing, because I'm in that area every day of my life. Every day I'm coming up and down that area. So, uh, thank you for listening to my comments, and if you will address these, I will be most appreciative.
Ms. Fay, can I ask you a question? As far back as you can remember, what was Evans Mill be- before?
Residential. It was all residential on both sides.
Really?
On both sides, from Covington Highway all the way down. It was all, all residential.
And then over time it shifted with commercial and mixed?
Yes, it started up at the corner of, uh, Evans Mill and Covington Highway. That was the first area that was sold from residential to commercial. And then when that started, it just went down both sides, and houses were either torn down or moved.
There's a doctor's office there.
From there. I'm on Davidson Drive up the hill.
Right.
That comes back into Covington Highway.
What was the doctor's building on the corner? What, what was his name?
Doctor's building on the corner of.
All I know is Dr. Foster.
Well, we know him too. But Dr. Snell.
Foster was on Covington Highway, but on Evans.
Yeah, he had a, uh, actually he had a building there for years for sale, and then he eventually just knocked it down. And then that, that, you can almost see the remnants of the sign that's, 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 that's still there.
Not coming to me right now.
Good stuff. But we know Dr. Foster though. We took everybody to Dr. Foster. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Beth Abbott. I live at the corner of Klondike and Rockland Road, and I'm thrilled. I'm standing before you with six votes. I have six ladies that go out every other night and day. We can tell you good restaurants, because as soon as we get in the car, they vote. And one of them has a little book, and she writes it all down. Also, I can remember when Burger Ki-, uh, Wendy's was here.
That's right, that's right. Yep, yep.
And I'm looking forward to Burger King coming. You got to have the king ever so often.
They had a king.
Just like you have to go down Covington Highway to the hot dog place. And you've got to go have one. They're delicious. But I'm glad they're coming. Thank you, and I hope you vote for it.
Thank you, ma'am. Stop it, stop it. Yes, sir.
Good evening, counsel. How you doing? Andrew Wells, I'm a Stonecrest resident also. Um, I want the third category also. Uh, I'm in favor, um, but my concern would be, uh, according to drive-through performance study performed in two thousand nineteen by QSR. Uh, Burger King has the second slowest, uh, drive-to-order time. So from the moment that someone makes their order to the moment someone has their food, they are second to Arby's. Uh, when I think about the site plan, my concern is the, the depth and whether or not we can get people in and around the proposed drive-through without causing traffic on Evans Mill. So, so my concern would be to make sure that the redeveloped building, uh, allows for the drive-through spacing so that we can get people in and out. And then also I think that's the, that's the go-home side of the road. That's when people on their way home, for the most part. Uh, coming down Evans Mill going under twenty. So I'm thinking there's more residences that way than there are on the other side. So then the, the average speed and, and then what it takes to get into that, that location, uh, coming down Evans Mill. So those would be very important concerns of mine to go along with making sure that the lighting, um, is adequate, uh, per the plan. And I mean, I'm talking about measure the lumens, make sure it's casting the right amount of light into the spaces to make sure that, um, you have that, that lighting there.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Like the go-home side, uh, gotta remember that. Good stuff. Madam Clerk?
We have two minutes and forty seconds.
All right. Not seeing any, I'd like to, oh, one, oh, Mr. Lee, the king is out. Talking about the king. How you doing, sir?
Okay, Julius Lee, Stonecrest's, uh, resident, parks of Stonecrest. Uh, I'm supportive of this development and, uh, like the lady says, as long as it looks beautiful. I like the image, you know, that we present to our people and to us is that we have a beautiful location and that will uplift that particular strip, because I traveled it a lot as everyone else. And it's in need of something to lift it up. So I commend, you know, uh, the developers in terms of their work. Um, I would say that they, if they take a drive around and look at the new automobile, um, establishments that's being built. And the landscaping that they're putting out there is first class. You know, it's, it's, it, it makes a statement, and that's what I'm hoping that this development would do in that particular area. That's all I have to say.
One minute, thirty seconds.
There was a question. I believe that, uh, there is another, uh, uh, what is it? Burger King that's over on Panola. Okay, and that's in Stonecrest.
Right.
So there's, there is another one in Stonecrest, okay? And I just.
Pride of District Two?
We have the king.
Oh, okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, one more comment.
Yes, ma'am.
If we do have the, the, um, Burger King there, please have employees that want to be there. Everywhere you go now, you do not get very, very good service anywhere. You get people who look at you like, you mean, you want me to do that? You know, so if we're going to have this Burger King, please get some employees who will be nice to us.
There you go.
I mean, it's, like I say, we're out Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday, everywhere, everywhere. And I know you, uh, Mr. Burger King, I know you don't want to hear this. And I know you, Mr. Burger King, I know you don't want to hear this, but Bojangles is the nicest to us right now.
Public hearings are the best, man. Public hearings are the best. So, Ms. Fay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assure this to you. And Councilman Clinton is the person that invented this. It's called the Best of Stonecrest. And it's delivered by our economic development and their team. And we've recognized exactly what you, what you've talking, what you're talking about. We actually, as a team, bring those employers here along with their, their team and their employees. And we actually train them ground up as to how they are supposed to be. Now, they get their own training themselves, but for you to get that Best of Stonecrest sticker, you got to come through here. And then we give them extra training on that end of it because exactly what you mentioned. Oh, yeah, we do. Yeah, we follow up with them, everything. And that rather large gentleman on the fourth row, he can, yeah, that's him. That's him. He, he can give you the detailed programs of how we go about it. And I mean that to him in an affectionate way. He knows that. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Fourteen seconds left.
Why? Okay, so with those fourteen seconds, we'll just call up the representative.
She's got four minutes.
Oh, yes, four minutes. Yeah. Oh, they want to stick you for your four minutes. I apologize. No, they got four minutes. Now, you can, you can, you can, you can... Okay.
I think the only...
I'm folding with this one, okay?
One substantive comment, I hope it's responsive to the comment the gentleman made about the internal ingress and egress and traffic on the Evans Mill Road. We designed this to, to traffic standards, and we're hoping that together, we're going to be able to accomplish that without any lead-out onto the street with cars and internal circulation around the drive-through.
From the, from the menu board to the drive-through window, that allows for a six-car stack. And then there's an additional, at least another six cars behind the menu board, so you really have about a twelve-car stack.
Fourteen seconds is up.
Took me that long to reset it?
Excellent, excellent, excellent. All right. I do want to ask staff. All right, let me stand by with this. Oh, I'll take a motion to close.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would we close public comments on special land use permit one nine dash zero zero five?
All right, properly moved. In second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Wheeler. I'll just use this term. I've heard the other gentleman use the, this third category, if you will. So I, I just saw the sidewalks. I just saw the sidewalk on his, on his, his diagram here on the site plan, right? So is it missing somewhere else that I, that?
It's probably on the, in the application where they just did this general site of the building. They didn't actually do the improvements and so forth. Usually that's just to give you the city council an idea. They, they won't actually submit that type of level of detail until they go through the LDP process where, where staff will go through and mark and say, well, you need to show your sidewalks, you need to show your landscaping plans. So they send a whole full set for staff to review. Again, majority of the time is unless you guys make it so, a lot of the conditions are not going to be site plan specific unless you dictate it is. That might have been one of the concerns is that according to the, that the site plan that's submitted with the application is not to make it site plan specific because it does not show the sidewalks on there. So generally, you, generally what you'll say is something similar to the site plan submitted with, with the packet.
Okay, so I'll ask Council this. If approved, what language would you all like to use? Or are you, are you okay with what, Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Wheeler, well, my assessment is this. Mr. Wheeler, in your original presentation, you said that the sidewalks was part of the recommendations, or not recommendation, but the requirement.
Yes, yes, for the...
That's important. It's a requirement.
Yes, it's requiring through the LDP process that this is called streetscape requirements, which it is a part of any LDP process that is required for any kind of improvement for new development in the city or even redevelopment in the city.
In your opinion, do we need to add any additional language?
I guess it never, it never hurts to, to be redundant. I mean, we're our government. There's no point in, even we'll just, you know. But I mean, it's, it's up to you. I know I review streetscape requirements anyway, so I mean, that's one things I, I make a point to look at. But I have no problem if you want to add that extra level of, of clarity on there just to make a, make a point to prove that, hey, we need to make sure that the sidewalk's installed. Because again, it really, it holds them, holds the applicant accountable to it. Because again, if they do not include the sidewalk, that's a violation of the condition and therefore, you know, other things that could be held accountable for. But if he gives the city council a measure of comfort to include that on there, our staff has no problem with that. Again, it's just something else I'll use to enforce rules and regulations.
Okay. Again, Evans Mill Road, they are two lanes south and two lane northbound in that area.
Yes, sir.
And is there a need for excelled, decelled into the property?
Ken hasn't, Ken didn't make a mention of that. He'll probably, he'll probably make, he'll take a look at the existing curb cut and see if the existing, if a deceleration lane is needed or not. Again, that will be, that will be part of his review as well. Ken has a point to, to specifically put that in there if need be. But I can give, I can get, I just point out, I don't know because Ken is the one that makes that, that judgment.
Yeah, I know. Since you have two lanes, I'm not sure how important it would be, but just to note that that could be a concern as they grow and they're successful. You might need that excelled, decelled.
Ken takes that into consideration in the future. He takes, when he asks for, he asks for additional right-of-way along Evans Mills Road is to include for a possible deceleration lane in case it does, in case it happens.
Okay, and of the applicant, Mr. Hiliot? Just, just quickly, lighting. I understand you close at midnight? This facility is scheduled to close at midnight?
I think during the week it is. I think it's maybe one o'clock on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday at hours.
But the lighting for that facility would be on twenty-four, I mean, well, whenever it's dark. It stays on all night long, all morning long, rather?
They won't stay on all night. They'll stay on until the close of business.
Yeah, I mean, the external lighting.
Parking lot lights?
Right.
Normally, I think, I think they go off at, at the close of business. I don't know if you have those set up on, on timers or like eyes.
Okay, just a matter of concern for security. Mr. Wheeler, is that the standard for most of the fast food restaurants?
Greatly varies depending on the, the restaurant area. Again, that's a condition if you would like to add. I mean, I, I don't see unless, I don't know if it can be enforced or not. If it can, then that's something you can add to it as far as lighting. Because again, we do have requirements to make sure that lighting does not go to certain, go into a certain, certain level. It does not, you know, cause any excess disturbance to the surrounding property, especially the residents behind, located to the west. So that is a concern if you want to, you know, put something in there for that.
You're the, you're the developer, but you're not the operator, so that would be, might be an operator policy?
Actually, we are the owner and operator.
You are the owner-operator. Okay, then we can deal with them about security with the lighting? Something we can come back to?
Yeah, but I don't want to put that in their demand for this.
Right. I was curious, yeah.
Because McDonald's, their lights don't stay on all night. I pass by there often. But yeah.
A concern for security that, that be addressed, maybe not here, but at some point in time, okay?
Yep, I agree. All right, normally at this point, council, anybody else have any questions? Normally at this point, I will yield to a person from District Five, since that's actually in District Five because I yield to every councilperson that has an element in their area, so I will stand in that steed. Having said that, that's right, steed, yeah. And like a horse. Oh, absolutely not. Then I will, if you don't mind, Council, I'd like to offer a motion for approval for SLUP one nine zero zero five, twenty-seven seventy-three, Evans Mill Road. Do you have a second?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further consideration? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Go to new business? This may answer a question a young lady had for me that were, I thought I still saw her. Yes, I see her in the audience. We'll go to the IGA for the de cab. Discover the cab, but Councilman, you wanted to call it something different. You wanted to... Yeah, right, 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 right.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, pleasure to be here before you.
Yes, sir.
We were, I'd like to, to address the, the citizen's question remark earlier in regards to what we can, can do in the, the need to maintain the relationship. In my thirty-plus years of sales and branding and marketing and business development and brand development, one of the things that I did in my career was to work for Discover the Cab Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I worked there for seven years prior to becoming to work for the city of Stonecrest. In my capacity with, with Discover the Cab, I handled, I was a sales manager for every market that existed for Discover the Cab. The Corporate Government Association, a market they call SMURF, which is an acronym for, for Social Military Education, Religious and Fraternal, as well as, as well as film. The only markets that I didn't cover were family reunion, the markets, the touring travel markets, which are, which are buses and, and buses that came in, and the diverse, diversity market, which was the lifestyle market. Aside from that, I had an opportunity to be able to work and make plans and set strategy and develop plans for, for, for De Cab County. As relates, Mr. Mayor, that's how you and I met because I, I met you a couple of years ago when there was a direction to, to be able to, the direction was to be able to work closely with cities and show the relationship that Discover the Cab had with cities. And I saw other cities in De Cab County that were being paid considerable attention to, and I didn't feel like there was a lot paid here. So I met with you to ask if I could accept that as my project for, for that time period and to be able to take over, be able to represent Stonecrest with, with Discover the Cab. In that time period, for about, I guess about a year, about a year and a half, two, almost two years, while doing my, my responsibility for the entire county, I focused on opportunities to be able to bring leads to Stonecrest and for the benefit of those who were not in the industry, a lead is when we would meet someone, they'd discuss their, their desire to have a meeting, and then we get specifics and send it to the hotels. During my time period of working with, working closely and focusing on Stonecrest, I was able to, to, to grow the, to grow the number of leads, the percentage of leads for Stonecrest by ninety percent. So we almost doubled what was, I was almost double in my markets what Discover the Cab had done prior to that in the last year. So that is my, is my, my experience with that. I know their, their, their structure. I know that, I know that the successes that they have that existed through the county and certainly that existed here. And those have a lot of room for improvement. We, when you, when you look at hospitality and tourism, basically what you're doing is you're telling your own story. You're telling the story to be able to bring people in, to come in and, and, and have meetings and have conferences or have tournaments or, or come in and bring busloads of kids for, for college tours or, or take advantage of, of opportunities like, like Arabian Mountain or sports and even religious markets and be able to bring people in for the purpose, solely for the purpose of bringing them in, staying in a hotel room, to be able to spur economic impact and economic development. Support the businesses in the area, make sure people have an opportunity, employees have an opportunity to be able to get more hours and to be able to grow your city as a place that people want to come to. Just of, I, I know that we're going to talk about Discover the Cab and why there's a need to have a, have our own, our own bureau here. I just happened, happened to take a look at the website while I was sitting waiting to, waiting to come forward. And they have a section, if anyone wants to see it, it's called, visit Discover the Cab CVB. And they'll have a section called Neighborhoods, and which will show all the cities that are, that are listed. And when you look at the city of Stonecrest, the one thing they list is Arabian Mountain Natural, Natural Heritage Area. That's it. So, you know, of all the things we have to offer, of all the things that the city has that are bright spots and reasons for people to come in, while they're still working on their, on their website, that's all they have right now. I do know that they are in the process of, of updating their website and making some changes. I do know that, that they have had some organizational restructuring. And they have, when I was there, they had four salespeople. Now they have two. I know that they had three marketing people. I think now they have one. And so they're refocusing their efforts, but I think it's, I think that we have the resources available to be able to make our own decision.
There you go. Thank you. All right, Council, before you leave, any questions for? Good deal. All right.
I got, I just want you...
There is.
To be clear, right now, the city has an intergovernmental agreement with them.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay.
Well, Council, with that, and with permission of, of course, our city attorney, I will accept a motion to cancel the agreement with the cab CVB. All right, I move that we cancel the agreement.
Yeah.
All right, properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Council. We have our own visitors bureau now. Appreciate it.
Mayor, we'll, we'll prepare a letter for you to sign tomorrow to send to them.
Lovely.
Technicality, do we need to now vote to establish? It's in the charter. It's already done. Nothing else supposed to do. Okay.
Hey, let's, let's dance right now. We good?
Yeah. It's in the chart. I'm good.
Lovely. Twenty-twenty planning commission schedule.
Good evening, Council. What's in your packet is, is proposed, is been voted on by the planning commission as for their meeting schedules for the upcoming twenty-twenty. So it's important that you guys go ahead and approve it because I have a list of applicants who are waiting to get on the docket. So January is, we'll be starting off very busy, so that's all I got for that.
All right, Council, we have any questions for Mr. Wheeler? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept the twenty-twenty planning commission meeting schedule.
All right, properly moved. Second. All right, properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-twenty planning commission schedule approved. Mr. Wheeler, oh, yes, you're, you're, you're still there. Folks, he, he's a little shy, but I want to tell you all, he has a two-week-old baby. And he should be sleepy. And this is his first day back, so let's, let's congratulate our director of planning. Our little baby.
A future newf, you know that.
We got his little calf clothes right up here for him as soon as he, uh... It's a boy.
His wife just a little credit to.
I may ignore that last comment, so. Yo, yo. Hey, you trying to find new pie?
There we go. You gotta love it, man. You gotta love it. Mr. Wheeler, your show, sir. Your show.
Yes, so the, what's before you right now is the second read of the updated Stonecrest overlay text amendment. Again, just to kind of reiterate, what the staff and what the steering committee is doing is to looking to, which is going to be an ongoing process, is to update the Stonecrest overlay. We adopted it from De Cab County, but staff and residents and business developers have all agreed that the Stonecrest overlay needs to be updated. This is just one of many times where we'll be looking to update as we move forward. As the city gets older, we'll be making tweaks and adjustments to it. What you have in front of you is the official written ordinance of the, of, of the text that you guys heard from last, from the last city council meeting, which I believe was this past, was November... November eleventh, no, eleventh, at the October, October twenty eighth, city council meeting. Again, everything that's in the ordinance is, was agreed upon by city council, which you guys told us to move forward with the written text. What I just handed out was Exhibit A was the map, the new updated map, which you guys spoke about last time. Again, to kind of go over the new text amendment, really, only thing that staff did was clean up some of the language. We included the new tier, which is tier six, the view shed, and then just, and that essentially was the only thing that we added, updated in the zone, in the Stonecrest zoning overlay district.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, was it straight motion for the vote? Or since that was second read?
It's a second read, so.
All right.
You're eligible to vote is right now.
Good deal. Okay, Council, since we have had our first read, this is our second read by Mr. Wheeler.
Yes.
Having said so, I make a motion to approve the T M O D one nine dash zero zero three.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and second?
Mr. Mayor, I can't find my note right there, but there was a, within the document, you mentioned that there are five tiers.
There's supposed to be six tiers. There's a, there's.
You already caught that?
Yes, sir, we've already caught that, and then there's a, there's another section I've already caught as well, which, again, I'll make sure that's corrected when it's officially drafted and signed by the mayor.
Excellent.
Okay. We properly moved, and there's a second. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? T mod nineteen double zero three, approved. Next one, T mod nine one nine dash zero zero five.
Mr. Mayor, this is our so-called Party House Ordinance. We've discussed this, this is our second read. It relates to these commercial establishments operating out of residences in residential neighborhoods that create these undesirable effects on the surrounding areas. We need to amend, at the last reading, council had some concerns about the transportation to and from, and so these have been made and these will be in the final version, which is ultimately signed by the mayor.
Deal.
And so as this is the second reading, this is an ordinance that is eligible to be voted on by the council up or down tonight.
Deal. Council, any comments? All right. I move to approve T mod one nine dash zero zero five. You'll have a second.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approved. Number C, T mod one nine dash zero zero six, small box discount store.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is yet again the second read on this ordinance, which is designed to curtail the impact of these so-called small box discount stores, which are proliferating not just in the city of Stonecrest, not just in DeKalb County, or the great state of Georgia, but it's a problem that's affecting communities nationwide, and we have learned from the experience of our neighbors around the nation, and we crafted an ordinance that we believe addresses that issue within the city of Stonecrest. As with the Party House Ordinance, there were comments at the last meeting where it was, into the first reading, which will be incorporated into the final draft of the ordinance for the mayor and council's consideration. This is the second read, of course, and so this ordinance is obviously eligible to be voted up or down at this meeting.
Council.
Mr. Mark, that additional text, did that include the provision for convenience stores, service stations?
Yes.
And the like?
Yeah, that certainly is included. Yes, sir.
All right. I'm going to move that we approve T mod one nine dash zero zero six, the small box discount store. You'll have a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion?
I do. I have some discussion. In regards to the small box discount stores as provided here, you know, again, I've said this all along, that I think there's a place for everything in the city of Stonecrest, key word being place. Now, when it comes to the small box discount stores, I think we have these stores in our communities because we support these stores in our communities. You know, it's just a matter of fact that if you're not shopping at a particular place, that place won't be in your community too long. So whereas our constituents have a tendency to go to Buckhead to shop at Macy's and go to Buckhead to shop at Dillers, why don't you go to Buckhead to shop at dollar stores? Because there are dollar stores in Buckhead. Or go to Buckhead, or go to Conyers to shop at dollar stores, and I think that would send a larger message to these developers than coming up in an ordinance to do this. After saying all of that, my understanding is that this ordinance only affect the tiers or the overlay, or is that not correct?
No, so this is citywide.
Citywide ordinance. Okay. Thank you. That's my comment.
Okay. That was our discussion portion of the motion, which is still going. Any further comments? All right. All in favor of one nine dash zero zero six? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Mr. City Attorney, don't allow me to stick my foot back in my mouth so I won't end up in court again. But I did want to use some ten thousand foot words if I could, please.
Sir.
And actually, this goes to a person who I think is a very good resident, Miss Renee Kell said it best, there's certain things we want here, there's certain things we don't want here, and, but we have to cover these things legally, because we can get sued, and they will win, and they can put their stuff here. So we have to handle this properly and quality at the same time. That's where I think all of us, you know, all of us want to go, and Councilman Clanton is correct, there is a place for everything in Stonecrest, really, because quite frankly, I wish they were still here, I would not have voted for that Burger King in Panera parking lot, period. But on Evans Mill Road, I certainly will, whether it's a McDonald's, we got a Mammy's on Evans Mill Road that's thriving. So I just said that to say there is, I agree with Councilman Clanton, there is a place for all businesses in Stonecrest, but it has to be in the right content, has to be in the right area, it has to have the correct lighting, drive through all those things that I think is, is mayor and council, that we want to make sure we're covering the citizens' total needs. Does that make sense? Good deal. All right. I'm a D. I G A E host.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there were a few areas here in the IGA that I just wanted to bring to your attention. Under, we started out, the third, whereas in here says that a referendum election was held in DeKalb County, Georgia on November seventh, twenty seventeen, in which voters approved suspending the one percent homestead option sales use tax, E Host, and replacing the tax with a one percent equalized homestead option sales and use tax, E Host, for the purpose of applying one hundred percent of the proceeds collected from E Host towards reducing ad valorem property tax millage rates within the county and municipalities. The following paragraph speaks to the use of it. The Commission of the Georgia Department of Revenue must disperse E Host proceeds to the county and municipalities first to reduce and eliminate, if possible, county ad valorem property tax line items levied uniformly throughout the county on homestead properties. Then, any remaining E Host proceeds must be used to reduce homestead property taxes at an equal and uniform rate across both county millage rates levied, only unincorporated portions of the county on homestead properties, and municipal millage rates levied in every municipality located either wholly or partially in the county on homestead properties. And then lastly, just wanted to bring to your attention. Get it right here. This, they also, under section four, they talk about the distribution of these, and in any given year, which there are remaining proceeds, the county must provide written notification of such proceeds to the revenue commissioner and the municipalities by no later than September first of the year, and the county's notification must certify the following information, the amount of remaining proceeds for the current year, the gross homestead digest value for the current year, the unincorporated homestead digest percentage in each municipal homestead digest percentage for the current year, and any municipality that does not levy a municipal ad valorem property tax. And lastly, under section four of that same section, the revenue commissioner shall disperse the remaining proceeds amount to the county and each municipality according to the unincorporated homestead digest percentage and each respective homestead municipal digest percentage, except for any municipality that does not levy a municipal ad valorem property tax. The revenue commissioner shall disperse such municipalities' respective share of the remaining proceeds to the county. All of the E Host proceeds for such years shall be dispersed to the county. And so as our percentage is calculated from that remaining amount that is going to the county, that's why we have such a, we have a very small percentages, it's almost negligible, but as the good city manager said, it's more, it's more, it's more than.
Okay, there's going to be a test afterwards. So. In short of this, Mr. Deputy City Manager, you can make the test on me because I am of average intelligence, but I have above-average desires. So, having said that, what this mean, folks, is that we are going to get a fifty thousand dollar check with regards to this E Host piece of it, and the county is volunteering to send us the money, and we shall take it. Did I sum that up, Mr.? All right. So having said that, I shall ask for a motion. Can we do it in the question part of the motion? All right. I shall accept a motion to accept the money.
Motion to approve the resolution to accept the funds from L-MAN.
All right. Almost, almost.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not L-MAN. Exactly.
Okay.
Second.
I'll be moved in second. Councilwoman Kabel.
This was on the agenda, this is a little different than the one that was on the agenda last night. So there was a section that we had a question about as it pertained to how we, we had to put this money in a certain place, right? This can only be spent in a certain place. I don't think it was Hotel Motel. The reason, we deferred it for a reason. And it had to do with how you can spend the money, there was a caveat in there that we were wanting some research on, it had to do with either the amount of time we had to spend it, the percentage, or something that had to do with the obligation for it specifically.
Or the proceeds itself, Councilwoman?
City K is, kind of pull my notes from last meeting. That's why we deferred it, otherwise we would have moved it along then.
I think you're referring to section five, says use of E Host proceeds, and it says the E Host proceeds distributed, dispersed to the county municipalities shall be utilized as follows, first to roll back and eliminate, if possible, the millage rates for the county general and hospital tax funds, and then B, then if there are remaining proceeds, the remaining proceeds credit shall be applied to the millage rates for any county ad valorem property tax items levied only in unincorporated portions of the county on homestead properties commonly referred to as the county police and designated funds. And there's a little bit more on here.
For any municipality that does not levy a municipal ad valorem property tax, which we don't, the remaining proceeds credit shall be applied to millage rates for any county ad valorem property tax line.
Levied within the boundaries of the municipality.
So since we don't levy a tax, this was the question that we had last week, I don't think we, I don't think we got an answer to that. That's why we deferred it.
Yeah. I think, well, since we don't levy a tax, DeKalb County levies a tax, so this is a rollback of the county taxes, which is why I don't understand that if it's to roll back the taxes, why did we stop short and not roll it all the way back to consume that fifty thousand dollars, whereas every citizen in Stonecrest would have got another dollar off of their taxes, roll back from their taxes, and it'd be, be just, you know, totally wiped out.
Why I asked that question earlier is why, why are we getting it? Who told us we were getting that?
We're going to talk ourselves out of the.
Yeah, so that would be my, that would be my question. What harm, what harm would this bring us if we take the fifty thousand dollars regardless?
Yeah, let me clear this up. So I'm not saying that we don't, we shouldn't take it, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is because it's applied to a certain place, I don't think we actually get it, like, it actually gets applied to the rollback, you're not going to see a fifty thousand dollar check, right?
And even if that's the case, right, even after that's the case, again, what harm would it be to pass a resolution to say that, you know, we can get it?
I just say we shouldn't pass it. What I'm saying is, paint the picture, it's not a fifty thousand dollar check coming to the city that's going to go into our general fund, it go, it applies to the rollback, so the citizens will see the rollback, you're not going to see a fifty thou, so what we were just saying, if I'm, if I'm, tell me if I'm wrong, you should have felt like we were going to get a fifty thousand dollar check in, right, but you were not. It's actually just, so yeah, we're going to take the money, and we're going to apply it to your rollback or to our rollback, and you'll see a difference. So, but that's not how we were structuring it. But that was our question last week, was that little caveat in there, since we don't levy a municipal ad valorem tax, the remaining credit goes back and the county does all that.
I, I promise y'all, I'll look into this and find out what's going on.
Should that prohibit us from voting?
I, I can just tell you, I hadn't worked with DeKalb County as long as y'all have, but I can promise you, they ain't trying to get you to sign no agreement and take no money unless you, they got to give it to you.
Yeah, I can say we shouldn't, I mean, you don't have to, it's going where it says that they're, it's going where they say it's going.
Mr. City Auditor.
All right. The money this year, as far as this year is concerned, we have to see what DeKalb County does, but from what is written here in the agreement, it will be applied to the property taxes of residents in Stonecrest that are paying for millage to the county, for services that the county continues to deliver. The biggest part of this is what nobody is saying is that in future years, if we levy a millage, then this rebate will be applied to the city millage that we apply, that we are assessing against our city. And so just like with Tucker, they imposed a millage for parks, they rolled back their millage for parks using this. Okay, so their people in Tucker are paying less than what they were paying to the county before based on this rollback that's provided by them.
So since there's fifty-plus thousand people. Everybody's standing in line to get their dollar. If I'm going on Jasmine's theory. Okay. I'm still excited about the fifty. Well, it's, looks like we're going to make it rain one, one, one dollar at a time.
Literally.
All right.
Take it to Burger King.
Nine nine seven nugget.
Or the dollar store. Oh, we can't do the dollar stores no more.
All right, I move. So, no worries. That was the discussion version of this, of this motion. It has thoroughly been discussed. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There we have it. Item E, I'm going to ask for a motion for deferral for the two thousand nineteen budget amendment resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move for deferral of the two thousand nineteen budget amendment resolution?
All right. Properly moved, I'll have a second.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor? Oh, yes, ma'am?
I want to add some more to your notes, look into for me. Under Public Works. The professional services line, looks like we budgeted five. um, looks like we budgeted five hundred and seventy-nine. We only spent fifteen hundred. I was just curious on why, why we didn't make an adjustment there? If by, what is this, November, we've only spent fifteen hundred of that five hundred and seventy-nine? It should be relatively large balance there. Just curious why there wasn't an adjustment made for that.
Didn't do it that way and I absolutely got all the money right there.
Right, okay. But when you, that's just a note to add to our internal auditor's comments to go back through and where there's zeros, make adjustments. Um, similar, oh, next page. Under, um, economic development for film permitting. I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. So it says that we didn't spend anything. It says zero. But then when I look at the twenty twenty budget that you gave us where eighty-three percent has been says eighty-nine thirty-two, but this says we spent. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Revenue side, okay, good. I was nervous. It's like, oh, we gotta find nine thousand now. Okay, good. Um, and the last question I had was how, how are we handling the, you may have answered this before I got here, and if you did, I apologize. When we have vacancies and personnel that carry over from month to month, um, and then some we just have not filled at all since those vacancies and so they have vacated those positions, how are we being credited for the months where those positions are not being filled? Since we have a lump sum contract with Jacobs and typically the payment is obviously the same, just whatever we voted on divided by twelve months. Um, but when there are vacancies, right, where is that money going and are we gonna get that money credited back to us for those long-term vacancies?
Well, to answer your question, what we're gonna do, what Mr. Wright and I are gonna do, we're gonna prepare an analysis for you that shows here's the positions we had, you know, January one of twenty nineteen. Here's the positions, you know, that we have now, uh, because there's some positions that have been added and, you know, the bill hadn't gone up.
Yep.
And I need to, and we need to show you all of that really at one time. And then, and then you, and then you, and when you see it, you may say, you know, I think Jacobs owes us something and, and I may agree with you, you know. But what we try to do is, is, you know, keep, we're mindful of that, you know, I'm, I'm keeping up for when they owe us something, you know. Wayne keeps up pretty good for when we owe them something, uh, you know, like when we get an extra employee or something that wasn't part of the, of the original contract. So we're gonna, we're gonna present, we're gonna prepare an analysis of all of that and present it at the next workshop. And I'll send it out when I get it, when we get it done, we'll send it on to y'all as soon as we get it. But we're planning to talk about it and present it at the next workshop.
That would be helpful to have it beforehand. I'd be interested to see how many positions that have been added and we haven't made any amendments to their contract.
Right.
So there, there shouldn't nearly be as many added that we have.
Let me, let's, let's wait till we get the analysis done and, and we'll throw it on the table and then y'all, you know, y'all do what, what you want.
So am I hearing that we're deferring this to a workshop or are we deferring it to?
No, I'm saying I'm gonna present this information that in a week. On the second, I'm gonna have this information, the analysis of the positions with Jacobs and all, and I'm gonna present it at our workshop.
Okay, so I mean, the motion is to defer.
Right, yeah, yeah, we're not, you know, we're deferring the, the budget amendment, absolutely.
But I think in clarity, point of order, should this be to a date specific, uh? Okay, then we need a date to which we can add to the motion.
And we'll add it to December ninth.
Okay, well, yeah, well.
So here's the thing, here's what we'll do since we're still in discussion mode with regards to the deferral. We'll defer to a specific date for city council meeting for voting on December ninth. But then Mr. City Manager is committing to the work session ahead of time to finish the discussion on all the things that Councilwoman Cobble and Council discovered that they want clarity on.
Well, we're, we're gonna, I'm, I feel, I feel fairly confident. I mean, we're gonna actually change the budget amendment a little bit based on what the two things that we are gonna do. It's gonna change a little bit, the numbers, just a little bit.
Well, changes change, so they wanna.
Exactly.
Wanna see the change. Our, our next regular council meeting is the ninth. However, let's do this first, so then we can, we can, because I want, there's something I want to handle here. I like that suggestion for certain. It's, it's date specific. So the, I'll, I'll, I'll restate, if I will, my, my motion with regards to um, the deferral of the two thousand nineteen budget amendment resolution to December ninth meeting. I stepped on your motion. I apologize.
Are you gonna, it could be a substitute?
I'll take it. How about that? Excellent.
You didn't hear that, did you?
There's some geniuses sitting up here.
Could you repeat that, please, Mayor?
So my substitute motion is to have the two thousand nineteen budget amendment resolution for December ninth. Then we'll, um, I have a second.
Second.
There we go. All horse and minds clear? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So for December ninth meeting, we'll have, um, um, the actual budget amendment uh, and then workshop prior to that. We can, exactly. Now, here's the question I have for you and Madam Clerk here. We talked about a December second meeting with regards to.
Well, we, we have advertised a public hearing on the budget for December the second at six o'clock PM. And if nobody else in the whole world is here, I will be here.
All right, now have, have, do we properly, do we need to properly make that motion here for, for vote for the actual meeting?
No, no, I mean, we've already advertised.
Already advertised.
Yeah, we do need clarification. The meeting for the second is for two items or just for one item? We're talking about the budget or we're talking about the budget amendment?
December second is a public hearing at six PM for the public to come and discuss the budget proposed for twenty twenty.
Right, not the budget amendment.
No.
The, the motion was for the amendment.
Correct, and that can be done.
I understand, but I thought you was giving a.
The meeting on the second will be a call meet. You could put other items on there.
We don't have to, I mean, that needs to be discussed, I guess, by council.
The, the December second meeting is for the twenty twenty budget.
Okay.
And that's.
December ninth meeting is for the two thousand nineteen amended budget.
That's fine. I'm fine with that. I'm just, I'm great.
Okay, December second is a public hearing. Council, you can come and listen to the public, but you're not voting on anything. You're not doing anything. We're just gonna have the public hearing for the public to voice their opinion three minutes at a time. I'm assuming that's how y'all did it last year. I can go back and check the tape to make sure that we're following the same procedure. And then December the ninth, we have a work session like normal and we have a meeting like normal. And we have December the ninth, y'all will vote on the twenty twenty budget. And what y'all are also going to vote on is the twenty nineteen budget amendment. And you can discuss both of those at that time if you'd like. Or y'all can have a called meeting on December second after the public hearing.
Okay, let me ask you this. So on, the second public hearing is on the ninth, right?
There's only one. There's only one public hearing.
You have to have the public hearing, then you have to wait seven days at least before you can adopt the budget. The public hearing will come on December the second, ninth, first day.
Okay. But that's only a week in between.
Correct, seven days.
So we need to hear the public comment, make our adjustments before the December ninth meeting, so in a week?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we gonna get together and talk?
Uh, we spent three hours today at this piece. This is the thing that young, somebody asked earlier is that, you know, we're not trying to surprise anybody, but this is why we had a, a budget hearing to.
Well, I understand that, but you made it for two o'clock on a Monday.
I'm sorry.
Difficult for, for the one person that works, but and then I understand that it was more of a presentation, right? It wasn't like the public's input included. That was the department heads making a presentation on why they want us to approve what they've asked for.
And deep dive with council though, deep dive with council with regards to all the questions, all the stuff, all the things that we've been putting together. See, that's the only real, you know.
Well, I get that, but that's not what we've done in the past, right? I mean, we've actually had a works, a, a budget retreat where we sat down and discussed it without being in a council meeting setting for all, we haven't, we haven't done that this year. So not unless this was some kind of hybrid of let's hurry up and get it done and.
It's when you leave town to have the meeting. I mean, you could, this, this whole crowd could still come. I mean, they just don't.
Yeah, I understand that, but you, you get what I'm saying. We didn't have.
And, and, and see, I was envisioning you have the public hearing at six and then we have a budget workshop after that. I mean, that's just what I thought you guys would do and, and you know, to talk about it some more if, if need be. Yes, ma'am.
But did we advertise that?
Yeah, but you know, I mean, we, we've advertised a public hearing because we have to. And, and we can advertise a call meet. Now, all you gotta do is advertise it twenty-four hours in advance and it's a week now, so we can easily, you know, put a call meet and, you know, I, I was just kind of under the assumption that's what we'd wind up doing is, you know, we'd have a public hearing at six and then at seven, probably, you know, depending on how much comment we got, we'd go, we'd go into however long y'all want, whatever y'all want to do.
Right, yeah. I would suggest that we do that, so.
Well, first of all, before this getting muddy, we've already had three hours, four hours of, 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 of the, of the budget with details for twenty twenty. Now, what I do suggest is that with respect, Councilwoman, if you have questions with regards to all the stuff that we collectively went over today, you got a city manager and a deputy city manager.
I want to talk to you all. I don't want to talk to them.
Yeah, I, I apologize, Councilwoman, you should have been at the meeting today. That's, I mean, I, I don't know how else to say it.
Called the meeting a week ahead, not even a full week, at two o'clock on a Monday, but either way, I want to talk to us. I can read very well. That's easy, but I want to be able to speak. I, I think that's insane that we're gonna debate about getting together to talk.
We're not debating it, you're debating it. But, but, but Councilwoman, here's the thing.
It'd be different if we got the book before today, right? And I was able to flip through the book or you were able to flip, and then we talked. All I'm asking for is an opportunity for all of us to get together and go over what we've heard today. What I'll read when I get home so that we can collectively have a conversation, even if it's on the second after the meeting, that's fine. But I don't think because, I don't think it's fair that because we called a meeting less than a week ahead on a Monday at two o'clock that I should be penalized for not being able to sit down with my counterparts to discuss it. All I'm asking for is to sit down and talk about it. I can't understand why that's a debate.
That's right.
I'm, I'm not actually trying to debate that with you. I, I, I'm not. I'm gonna make this point and then I go to, to, to Councilman Turner. Since that's, you know, since that's what you want, uh, with council, I have no problem doing that with council. What I have a problem with is waiting on it, on the dates that we have set forward to be able to make something happen, to redo it because you couldn't, because you couldn't make it.
Oh, no, I didn't request that. I don't, I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, so having said that, I'm, I'm gonna go to, I will yield to Councilman Turner and I'll take whatever suggestion you all want to collectively have. But on December second, we have a public hearing for twenty twenty budget.
And if I may, I'll, I'll start, I'll start right there on the second with the public hearing. Uh, who knows how much information we're gonna get from the public? The public might introduce something that will cause us to want to make some changes in the budget. And I think a good time to discuss that is while it's hot, so uh, following the public hearing, if it's a ten-minute, uh, meeting or a three-hour meeting, we need to deal with what the public gives us, uh, if we're gonna take what the public gives us seriously. And, and, and we should, so.
Yeah, I, I think, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so after the meeting, we just have a call, why not we just go ahead and schedule a meeting now so that we can advertise it properly? Uh, as a matter of fact, more than proper, and just go ahead and schedule a meeting for, uh, a point in time after the.
Exactly what I said.
Okay, well, fine, we're good, right? Okay, so we're, we're all good.
Maybe George should say it next time.
It's just, it's just sound better when it comes from this point. But, uh, no, no, so is, is that fine? Is that fine? Okay.
All right, so that we're all on the same page. Let's recap it. And then, it's okay, you know, we want to do all the things that, uh, we're supposed to. Uh, so for December second, we're gonna have a public hearing where the public comes out to hear the budget, one, all right? So that is, that is December second, all right?
And comment on it.
And comment on it. And keep it, uh, keep our schedules open so that, uh, as Councilman Turner has mentioned, George Turner has mentioned, uh, there could be a significant miss or fine that we need to add or subtract, you know, to the budget. Because it is the city budget, it is the people's budget. I'm, 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 I'm very good with that as a matter of fact. Um, so on December ninth, uh, we'll actually have, uh, unless you tell me differently, Mr. City Manager, the vote for the twenty twenty budget.
Right.
All right, vote for the twenty twenty budget. Uh, but also during December ninth work session, we're going to finish this conversation for the budget amendment that you're gonna have answers for, for Councilwoman Cobble and for, or, or any council person.
I mean, it's, it's often a change and I'm gonna send it out to you soon.
Okay, well, we're getting it clear right now, though. We're getting this clear right now. So December ninth, we'll have the, um, uh, work session for the two thousand nineteen amended budget, all right? That'll be a work session. And then December ninth for the actual, uh, city council meeting, we will, uh, keep me on task, Councilwoman Cobble, we'll vote for both. The actual two thousand nineteen amendment and the two thousand twenty, the, the, uh, twenty twenty budget, all right? Sounds good. All righty. We're not gonna do an executive session.
Do we vote?
Yeah, we do. The motion on the floor.
You didn't, you didn't vote on all that.
You gotta vote on the amendment.
I gotta re-speak.
All in favor?
All opposed? Stick that one. All right, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, I don't have, I think we've said it all. I don't.
Mr. City Attorney? Mr. Deputy City Attorney, yeah, Deputy City Attorney, Deputy City Manager.
It's all of that.
Yeah, it's all of that, that's right, it's all of that. All right, all right, good stuff, good stuff, good stuff. Um, if y'all will allow me executive privilege for a moment, uh, Ms. Cale, you were here and I don't know if you were thinking about public comments for this period or the other period, but you didn't get a chance. I didn't think you, you, you got a chance to make your comments that you signed up for. Did I miss you any kind of way? If so, okay, okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Council.
Just very concerned about the amending the text of the Stonecrest overlay district because our concern is that things that are not going to be productive for the city or in the best interest of the city, the changing of that text might allow things to come in that are not wanted. So Megan said, we would like to be able, I was hoping that you would not even vote on it yet until, because the public doesn't really know what it is. They don't. A lot of people don't know what it is, don't know why it's being changed or amended. And you have papers that you can look at, but we don't. So Megan said she would email me a copy so we can look at it, but I mean, it's just such a seemingly not uh, equal process for us as constituents.
I got you.
That's my concern.
I got you. And, uh, let's do that for sure. And from here, Ms. Cale, um, so that you'll know, um, in this, 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 if you'll allow me, I'll put a pin in this with regards to how we, uh, better communicate these meetings with regards to, so everybody knows, you know, what has happened when.
I appreciate it.
You know, I, I, if you don't mind, I'll even put you on my personal list and make sure that, that, you know, my list isn't big, so.
That'll enable me to pass it on to people who don't know, um, people in the organization, people that just want to know exactly what's going on and all the terminology is not always clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and people can't jump up and say, well, what's that? What's that? So, you know, whatever would make it better.
Got it. Okay, we'll do that for sure. I, I appreciate your comment. Councilwoman Cobble. Minister.
Just wanna wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Same here.
Quickly, twenty twenty census complete count. I had announced that we were having a meeting on the sixteenth, but really it was sort of in the fourteenth. That doesn't matter because it's been canceled. It was sort of be at, it's supposed to be at Stonecrest. With three cities, but that portion was canceled by the Cab County. They've moved it to the Redan Rec Center, and it's gonna be kind of a festival on that date. Look forward in the newspaper, and I'll send something out as well. It is to rally the community and get them involved and get them hyped for the twenty twenty census count. In addition to that, December first through the eighth, we're having a pledge card week. Kinda like you sign a, sign up for voting or whatever, there'll be a table set up here at City Hall or in the mall or both, where you come in and you actually sign a pledge to participate in the twenty twenty census. And the push is to get everybody involved and committed to participate in the twenty twenty census. And in addition to that, we are developing a website for the city of Stonecrest, where as when we pass out materials, they'll be referred to that website to get additional information on our twenty twenty census, complete count efforts in the city and in the Cab County. So, we had a meeting last week to develop a strategy for rolling out the twenty twenty census, so that's been put together now, and you should get that by the end of the year. So, this is very, very important, people. I'm gonna continue to talk about this until probably July of next year. The actual census, again, will be sent out, the, well, the request cards will go out in the middle of March. The, the complete count date is April one. So after April one, the count will actually start to count every citizen in this country, and we wanna get a hundred percent count in the city of Stonecrest. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman and staff. I'll be brief. First of all, thank you all for re-electing me. Let's start there. It took me nearly six decades to find my life's work. This is my life's work. I wouldn't do anything different than this, period. I love this. Every inch of it, the, 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 every inch of it. And I really just wanted to say thank you along, of course, with the First Lady. We appreciate your confidence, and, and we're going to, we're not gonna let you down, we're gonna keep things going the way they are. What I really enjoy about the city council meeting is that you find out from everybody what everyone's concern is as, as, as stakeholders. And we, as council, we wanna hear from everybody. We wanna know exactly what's going on so that we can meet our collective goals, so we can meet our collective goals. And if you can just keep this in mind as we continue to move forward for the future, folks, we're all, we all have the same goal. We just wanna make it better. That's all it is. We all have the same goal, we just wanna make where we live better. Does that make sense? As long as we stay with that, we won't be mad at each other. Well, sometimes.